I'd like to have my special friend Bennett Guthrie come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Will everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Bennett. If everyone will silence their cell phones and devices. I'll read the conflict of interest statement. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict respect to any matter coming before the board this afternoon? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter. We're now going to have Reverend Rusty Willis, renowned Reverend Rusty Willis, give us the invocation.
Commissioners, with the room this full, we need to take up offering.
Pass the plate.
Pass the plate. I thank you for this honor and the growing members of Beaufort by the Sea send their love and blessings to you all. Let us pray. Dear Father God, all of us in this room are blessed to call Carteret County a place of home. One of the beautiful places that you've created and so thank you for your grace that enables us to be here. Thank you for these commissioners that sit in this room. For your word tells us in the book of Romans that all authority is by your hand. And that you allow them to sit in their places for our good, not for our bad, and for blessings in our lives. We thank you that in this room, the words are written, "In God we trust." And you have proven to us many times through our life that if there's anyone that we can trust, if there's anyone we can know that loves us perfectly, if there's anyone that can be there for us always, it is you. We thank you that as these people sit here at this dices, that you will give them more than just knowledge, but you'll give them a gift from above, wisdom. Wisdom to make right decisions. They know as commissioners that they may not always be able to please everyone with their vote. But your wisdom will give them the ability to vote for what is best for the most and also to do what is pleasing to you. And we pray that you'll watch over all of us in this night. As your son, our Savior Jesus Christ, is the King of kings and Lord of lords. And until we see him face to face, may we always do what is pleasing to him. And we pray it in his name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Rusty. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn.
Six.
Seconded by Commissioner Moore, all in favor? Announced. Is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Waltrip, seconded by Commissioner Shin, all in favor? All right, let's see, announced. All right, public comment. Mr. Eddie Youngblood. Come on down and you'll have three minutes if you'll state your name and address.
Thank you all for letting me speak. Oh, I'm Eddie Youngblood, 141 Morgan, Beaufort. It's actually in Maurya City, but it's post office.
We used to call it Beaufort anyway.
Yes, post office still thinks it's Beaufort. I'm thankful for our federal efforts to make government more efficient. And I think we should implement some of the same philosophy here in Carteret County. My focus here is to highlight the disregard of the voters' wishes with the 2020 school bond. In that bond, there was $2,305,000 set aside for athletic facilities in our schools. And you all have handouts with all the documentation for the bond and also the meeting that we'll talk about in a minute. Plus, plus there's an article in the paper from the paper in there also that shows that the school board in a very, had a very brief mention of and complete dismissal of these athletic facilities in their March 4th, 2025 meeting, just over a week ago. My question is, what has happened over the last four plus years to the funds for these projects? Currently funding for the computers, projectors, and defibrillators is stated as the reason for abandoning the athletic facility projects. I myself am especially focused on West Carteret tennis. Only two of the three courts are playable and just barely. Practice is impacted and home matches must be held in Newport. My question is, could we not replace 100% of the computers and that other equipment, its projectors and the defibs? All in one year? Surely some substantial percentage of this equipment could be used for one or two additional years and the savings be directed to the athletic facilities that the voters approved in the bond? And lastly, these kids worked extremely hard and achieved high rankings at conference and state championships. They deserve more than what we are giving them for facilities. Especially since the voters provided for those facilities. Much like the federal problems where unelected administrators dole out taxpayers' monies to projects not specified by the voters, I think we must install and monitor managers who implement the voters' wishes. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Youngblood.
You understand it? Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Mr. Nelson Paul, you're next, if you've got three minutes and if you'll state your name and address.
My name is Nelson Paul. My wife and I split our time between Morrisville and Betty. There is a petition for a declaratory rule impending before the Coastal Resources Commission. This is in regard to KAMA jurisdiction over man-made ditches dug in high ground on private property. I have a photograph with me this evening that illustrates the issue. This photograph is of a coastal ditch, however, it presents three areas of environmental concern where the NC Division of Coastal Management is claiming jurisdictional authority. First, the division claims that the ditch waters are navigable waters and KAMA Public Trust areas of environmental concern. Second, the Public Trust AEC carries with it the Coastal Shoreline AEC. The Coastal Shoreline AEC includes a mandatory 30-foot setback or prohibition area measured from both sides of the ditch. And third, the marsh growing in the ditch bottom is not natural but volunteer and opportunistic. The division is claiming this is coastal wetlands AEC. Three areas of environmental concern and a man-made ditch dug entirely in high ground on private property. These jurisdictional claims go for as far as you can see in this photograph. Thousands of feet up this ditch. Not just this ditch, but there are 10 other ditches in this field spaced 150 feet apart. As these KAMA AEC jurisdictional claims are applied, the jurisdictional picture takes on the look of a hay rake. This effectively removes any productive use of this land outside the KAMA farming and forestry exemption. With this petition, it is my contention that these jurisdictional claims violate the implementation clause of the Coastal Area Management Act and North Carolina General Statute 113A-102. Man-made ditch. First, the implementation clause requires the KAMA be applied only to natural shorelines in that statute. Man-made ditch edges are clearly not natural shorelines. Second, the implementation clause only allows the KAMA to be applied to the natural environment. Volunteer and opportunistic marsh is not part of the natural environment. And thirdly, the implementation clause requires the KAMA be applied in a manner where private property rights shall be protected. There is not even the slightest attempt on the part of the division to protect private property rights here. This issue is of paramount importance to Carteret County property owners east of Beaufort. I'm asking you for a formal resolution of support for this declaratory ruling. The Coastal Resources Commission must officially acknowledge there is no KAMA jurisdiction over man-made ditches dug entirely in the high ground on private property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
You'll have our support.
We're going to work on that and get the county manager.
Isn't that in opposition to the federal law that was passed during the last Trump administration?
Um, there was a court case called the Sack of Decision that was in May of 2023. And that was non-zero with the Supreme Court of the United States. And that changed the federal jurisdiction over wetlands. Now, we haven't seen the effect of that yet. They've been kind of sandbagging that, but that did change it legally. And this may tie into that, but I will stay away from the Sack of Decision in this presentation.
I would encourage you to forward that to Representative Carnes and Senator Sanders.
I fully support this, that you know KAMA is reaching further and further inland. If it's the consensus of the board, we'll direct the county manager to go ahead and sign the proclamation because you're going to be attending the Coastal Resource Commission meeting in Washington or Kill, Devil Hills where?
That's going to be in Mania on May 1st, in the government building in Mania.
So we'll go ahead and send our support if everybody's fine with that?
Yes.
So we'll take care of you on that.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Well, we'll help. I don't know if we can take care of anything.
That's all I ask. Thank you.
If it was up to me, I'd put Elon on all of them, but that's, it's not up to me. Brian Nicolau is next.
Missed it last night.
There he is.
I texted him last month. I thought he was someone calling.
You missed a meeting.
Good evening. My name is Brian Nicolau, 1502 Salter Path Road. I want to thank the commissioners and staff for their service to the county and sovereigns. Glad to see you all here tonight. My topic tonight is about Tina Peters. Who is Tina Peters? Born 11 September 1955, Tina Peters is a patriot. Tina Peters is a Gold Star mother of a fallen Navy SEAL. Tina Peters is a cancer survivor. Tina Peters is a former clerk for the Mesa County, Colorado from 2019 to 2023. Tina Peters is a whistleblower. Tina Peters is now a political prisoner incarcerated under a nine-year sentence. What did Tina Peters do to get herself in the crosshairs of the globalist deep state? In short, Tina Peters did her job as a county clerk. But in doing so, she exposed election fraud in the Mesa County, Colorado 2020 election. I'll leave it to your own research for more details and I'll provide you with references at the end. However, suffice it to say that Tina Peters is a first-time nonviolent offender and she is receiving harsh and incarcerated. Why doesn't President Trump pardon her, you might ask? Well, he simply does not have authority over state charges for the pardon. He can only pardon federal charges as he did rightfully for our J sixers. You may also be asking, why is the incarceration of a Colorado County clerk important to the patriots of Carteret County, North Carolina? Well, simply stated, it is because of the four years of abuses we witnessed and many endured during the fraudulent, feckless Biden regime. And although we now have patriots back in the White House, the war is yet to be won. With the election of Donald Trump, we have simply reached the objective. Now we need to consolidate, organize, and push on to victory at every level of government to include local, state, and federal. The globalist elite, often dressed as Democrats, but also include many Republicans, will simply pick us off one by one. So that's why we must stand and support patriots in any state and in a town across this great country. Where we go one, we go all. The difference between patriots and those of the globalist's agenda, patriots are often busy and overworked. Patriots hold themselves individually accountable. Patriots don't get paid to protest. On the other hand, the globalists are often well-funded, well-organized, and they're paid to sway public opinion and emotions. It's time for patriots to start getting more organized locally in this county. And therefore, I invite you to meet with me on Friday in Indian Beach. I got permission to meet at a old grocery store parking lot from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. I'll be sitting out there with my flags, my music, and my patriotic topics to talk with you about from 6:30 to 8:30 PM this Friday. And we're going to discuss freedom, patriot issues, and solutions. I'll finish up with a quote by Tina Peters. Everyone can do something. There are more of us than there are of them. They can't get us all. For more information, go to tina-peters.us. That's tina-peters.us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nicolau. That's all the people we have signed up for public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I know we have some folks in overflow room next door. Melissa, will you ask if any of those people would like to speak?
No sir.
Okay, move along. Next, we have the recognition of the Jamie Hicks Long Employee of the Month Award for January, February, and March, Mr. Nick Wilson.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're here to celebrate the Jamie Hicks Long Employee of the Month recipients for the first quarter of 2025. This award in honor of Jamie's commitment to going above and beyond, recognize those employees who have made a difference in Carteret County. Tonight, we're going to celebrate three individuals. We're going to first begin with our January honoree, Detective Matt Howe. When we think of unseen heroes who work tirelessly to keep our community safe, Detective Howe's dedication immediately comes to mind. He's a seasoned investigator with the Sheriff's Office and his work in digital forensics has set a new standard for excellence. At the forefront of using this technology, Detective Howe has become an invaluable asset in solving complex cases. His expertise in cellphone distractions has not only aided investigations in Carteret County, but has also been instrumental in supporting surrounding counties like Craven and Omslo County. His contributions don't stop there. As a senior member of the newly formed crime scene unit, he has worked tirelessly to enhance his effectiveness, bringing a relentless drive to learn and improve. He also serves as a crisis negotiator for the special response team where his calm demeanor and leadership shine in high-pressure situations. Detective Howe also is willing to share his knowledge with mentor younger deputies and assist colleagues with challenging investigations. Beyond his day-to-day responsibilities, Detective Howe has secured nearly $20,000 in grant funding for advanced forensic tools. This achievement not only strengthens the sheriff's office investigative capabilities, but also saves taxpayer dollars. Additionally, his role as a special agent with the North Carolina Secretary of State's office brings valuable resources and training to Carteret County, all at no cost to the residents. And outside of work, Detective Howe also gives back to the community as a football coach at East Carteret High School. Through his coaching, he instills valuable lessons in young people, shaping them into responsible and resilient individuals. Detective Howe's hard work, leadership, and dedication make him a well-deserved recipient of this honor. So at this time, please join me in congratulating Detective Howe and his achievements.
Thanks, sir.
If you're thinking about committing a crime.
All right, now we're going to turn our attention to our February honoree. As you know, a library is just more than books. It's a place where people come for guidance, commuting, and a friendly face. At the Beaufort Library, that friendly face often belongs to David Montgomery, our circulation technician. David is the kind of employee who makes the library a welcoming place for everyone. Whether he's helping a patron navigate the NC Cardinal catalog, solving a technical issue for a colleague, or assisting with a heavy box of books, he does it all with kindness and without hesitation. In this role, he keeps materials organized, processes inventory, and handles patron accounts. These tasks may not always be glamorous, but David approaches them with excellence and a positive attitude. What truly sets David apart is the genuine care for the people he serves. He knows our regular patrons by name, remembers their favorite genres, and takes the time to ask about their lives. He doesn't just recommend books. He recommends the right books because he listens. His patience and kindness make a difference in the everyday library experience, both for patrons and staff. David's passion extends to helping with genealogy requests, guiding patrons through ancestry resources, obituaries, and microfiche archives. His dedication ensures that everyone who walks through our doors feels supported, whether they're searching for their next great read or uncovering pieces of family history. So at this time, please join me in congratulating David Montgomery, circulation technician. All right, last, finally we come to our March honoree. Some people don't just do their jobs, they change their lives doing them. Jane Rose, our community support service technician with Adult Services at DSS is one of those people. For more than five years, Jane's been a steady and compassionate presence in the lives of the adults she serves. Many remember her from her time at her former retirement community at sea level, Snug Harbor on Nelson Bay. And even now, former residents is light up at the sight of her. For some, she's more than a support worker, she's their only visitor, their trusted friend, and their source of joy. Jane goes above and beyond to ensure her clients' essential needs are met. She coordinates support minutes, assists with daily tasks, and advocates for their well-being. Whether she's taking them for haircuts or a shopping trip, for their favorite snacks, or out for a burger and a milkshake, these small outings mean the world to those in her care. Jane is also there in the hardest moments, holding their hand during medical procedures, calming them down in times of crisis, and helping them find solutions when they are lost. When the phone rings in the office, it's often a client asking, "When do you come to see me?" A testament to her deep trust and comfort she brings. But Jane's kindness extends beyond her clients. She brings warmth and joy to the entire office. If you hear laughter echoing through the halls of DSS, you know she's there lifting everyone's spirits. The day Jane retires, which we hope is not, we hope it's a long time from now, will be a sad day for DSS. Jane is simply irreplaceable and DSS is better because of her. So congratulations, Jane. Thank you, everybody.
You guys will slide down towards the middle.
I'm like gaffe.
Yeah, so yeah, you need him in gaffe. He'd be blocking everyone.
We're almost the same height.
Jake can't tour.
I'll come this way a little bit.
Hey man, tell Lindsay I started walking down sidewalk yesterday, but I'm going to be better scared.
Congratulations, Barry.
Thank you. Thank you very much. His wife is six-six. He's got two kids.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Okay, next we have a presentation on a name request for the island between Harker's Island and Straits, Mr. Barry Guthrie.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'll make this brief as we can. We're here to propose that we name the area of the old Harker's Island Bridge, the Livingston W. Brooks Memorial Park. Livingston, Harker's Island native, was, joined the Coast Guard and was killed in action on January 29th, 1942 when his ship, Coast Guard Cutter Alexander Hamilton, was torpedoed by a German U-boat. Livingston was one of the first two Carteret County residents to be killed in World War II. He was the first from down east and the first from Harker's Island to be killed in World War II. The Alexander Hamilton was the first loss for the Coast Guard in World War II. The Alexander Hamilton was the first United States warship to be sunk after the United States entered the war in World War II. We propose to name the park after Livingston. And what we see is a great recreational area and an area where veterans and civilians like can go and it'd be not only a place for fishing, but a place for, a peaceful place, a place that they can go. but a place for, a peaceful place, a place that they can go enjoy our coastal area. We envision that school groups can come there on field trips to study our coastal environment and our marine life. We would, we would like to place picnic tables on the center island and a gazebo-type sun shelter that we can, that families can go there and just have a place of rest. It's one of the most beautiful places you'll ever see. So that's, that's what our proposal is, and I'd like to ask Colleen Robinson Guthrie, she's my aunt's best. Her father, Nathan Robinson, retired highway patrolman, he was actually on the ship with the Livingston W. Brooks attack. So I'd like to ask her to say a few words, if she would.
Hello, everyone. My name is Colleen Robinson Guthrie. I'm originally from Atlantic, but I live in Beaufort now, and my father was on the Alexander Hamilton. My daddy's name was Nathan Robinson. He served with the United States Coast Guard for six years, and of course, that was during World War II. When he returned home, he joined the North Carolina State Highway Patrol, and he stayed there thirty-six years. And people said, "Why did you stay that long with him?" He said, "I liked to eat." So while he was in the Coast Guard, he was assigned to the Alexander Hamilton. On January of nineteen forty-two, they were off the coast of Iceland when a German U-boat torpedoed the ship. He was one of the lucky ones that got to come home. This was the first ship sunk after Pearl Harbor, as Barry has told you. There were six men from Carteret County aboard that ship. Being from down east, we always had been a close-knit crowd, so we kind of stick together. So I'm sure you're talking about these men were nineteen and twenty years old, so I'm pretty sure they stuck together every time they could. My daddy never told the story of that awful day without tears running down his cheeks and his face. Through the years, the years have faded, but the tears never did. He still, to his dying day, when he was eighty-two years old, could tell the story, and the tears still showed. Livingston Brooks will live in the lives and the hearts and our minds of the people that he was related to and friends that knew him, and I myself will never forget that name because I heard it from my daddy so many times. But what happens after this generation dies? And who's going to be living, be even to tell you that Livingston Brooks didn't come home after that day? I think it would be a very touching way and would be so nice to have Livingston's name placed upon a sign saying that this was his park. I can see in the years to come that there'll be picnics, trips, fishing, and this spot is beautiful, where his name will be seen and someone else will speak it maybe one day. My daddy would have been so proud to have had this to happen, and I wish he could know about it today, and I really hope that you all agree with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Livingston Brooks, he is the nephew of Livingston W. Brooks.
Like Barry said, I was named after my uncle Livingston. The family called him Liv, and I have had that nickname follow me through my life. I remember growing up, in Grandma Nettie's yard, there was a monument commemorating Livingston's death. It didn't mean a whole lot to me as a, as a young child, just, it was just another name on a hunk of stone. It wasn't until I got older and I started listening to my, my father and my aunts and uncles and my grandmother, and I could still hear in their voices the sense of loss decades later. And it hit my grandmother especially hard in that she lost her husband, my grandfather, Gordy, the same year. And my dad was twelve at the time, and he kind of assumed the man of the family, so it had long-reaching effects on the family. Harker's Island has always had a rich Coast Guard heritage, and sometimes I think the Coast Guard isn't often recognized enough for the contributions during times of war. Naming this park for Livingston would not only honor him and his family, but also the other families that lost loved ones during service to our country, as well as the victims and survivors of the Alexander Hamilton. I thank you all for your consideration in this matter.
I'd like to ask Kara Brooks Matthews, the niece of Livingston W. Brooks, to say a few
I'm a genealogy buff, so just wanted to share some dates. My, my grandfather, James Gordon Brooks, was born in eighteen eighty-eight, and he married my grandmother, Nettie Mae Brooks. She was born in eighteen ninety-three, but they got married on December twenty-third, nineteen eleven. They started a family shortly after with, in nineteen thirteen, my Uncle Claude Wheatley Brooks was born. Then Orinona Brooks was born in nineteen fourteen. My Uncle Livingston Ward Brooks was born in nineteen eighteen. My Aunt Edna Earl was born in nineteen twenty. My Aunt Leitha Pearl was born in nineteen twenty-three. My Uncle Curvis Gordon was born in nineteen twenty-five. My Uncle Joseph Bryan, Uncle Jake, was born in nineteen thirty-one. That's Liv's father. And then my father, Henry Allen Brooks, was born in nineteen thirty-four. Now, I'm thinking that Uncle Jake had probably just been potty-trained, and Dad was probably a surprise to them at their older age, having a child, so I'm grateful that he was born because that was my father. So eight children. My aunts and uncles, they had lots of children, so I had lots of cousins that I grew up with that were fun to be with, and a wide range of ages with all those older aunts and uncles that had children that were almost as old as my father. Some of my cousins were from my, or some of my cousins who are my age were, like, there were four of us that started first grade together. It was fun growing up on Harker's Island and being able to visit with aunts and uncles, and all of them, all of them had unique talents and personalities. It was a blessing to have all of them in my life. One aunt lived in Charleston, one in Florida, and another uncle lived in Florida, so we planned family vacations to go visit them, and it was always fun when they would come to the island to, to visit us and hang out with all the cousins. Missing from my childhood was the experience with my Uncle Livingston. I often thought of what he would be like, what his wife would have been like, maybe what their children would have been like, some additional cousins that we never got to have. At the young age of twenty-three, he was killed off in, in the North Sea off of Iceland, serving in the Coast Guard. And although he was killed eighteen years before I was born and never got to meet him in this life, my father always spoke of him and mourned the loss of his brother his whole life. Even as he was dying, he talked about, "I'll get to see my, my brother Livingston." My father was very affected by this loss at sea. He was afraid of the water, and growing up on Harker's Island, that's not an easy thing to have when you don't like to swim. Both my younger brother and I didn't learn to swim until we were adults. My brother builds docks, so his, his wife forced him to take swimming lessons as an adult in case he fell off of his barge out in the water. My dad had nightmares about being in the water and, and drowning, and that affected him all the days of his life. The youngest grandson of my grandpa Gordy and Grandma Nettie is my younger brother, Ashley Brooks. His son just turned twenty-one, and he just joined the Coast Guard and is stationed out in Bodega, California. So our, our family still serves in the military, and especially the Coast Guard is close at heart. We love the Coast Guard, and we would love to have this park named after my Uncle Livingston that meant so much to all of us.
Edward Lee Davis, he's passed away now. He told me a story one time that he grew up with Livingston, and he said, "All the young boys, when they were growing up, they would travel up on the west end of the island to Welman Johnson's house." Welman lived right on the west end of the island, right on the point. Well, where we're proposing the park, where that, where the center island is, is right there. So he said they played in the waters and they grew up there, and I think it's fitting that actually Livingston, he grew up right there. As a side note, his friend Welman, Nettie, traveled up to meet, he also was killed in World War II. There's a lot of people in Carteret County that's done a lot of good things. There's a lot of people right here in this room that today are doing a lot of good things. What we say about Livingston is it's not what he did, it's what he gave. And Livingston Brooks was twenty-three years old when he gave his life for our country, and we hope that you'll consider this and pass the proposal to name the park, the Livingston W. Brooks Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Barry, you mean to tell me you've got Anthony Nelson back there in the back and a microphone up here, and he ain't going to come up here and say anything? Got him to the chair. All right, I was just making sure. I certainly think that's a fitting tribute to the Brooks family. Are there any comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make the motion that we name the island in between Harker's Island and Straits, the Livingston W. Brooks Memorial Park.
I second it.
Motion by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Waltrip. Call in favor. Unanimous. Appreciate you all coming. You're welcome to hang out here for the rest of the evening. But that'll, that'll clear the room out of things. I think he wanted to name it the Livingston Brooks Veterans Memorial Park.
You did a nice job.
It wasn't bad.
I know, but he mentioned about adding veterans to the park.
Maintain that.
God did not allow that.
Should have known the name, the wrong name, the name of the park. Now he's going to maintain it. It's not a part of the room making it.
I think we're going to call it a park.
What the motion was mean, I didn't want to, I was not wanting to vote for that, but I did.
We'll work out the details.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Careful about stuff like that.
I think we already maintain it.
Thank you, Director.
Appreciate it, Rusty. Thank you.
Yes, just send me some.
We already maintain the area.
Send it to me. If we need a meeting, we can email back.
I thought that was some fisheries was taken.
No, we take care of it.
The problem is you're starting to name the one park after one person, now you've opened up for any other park to be renamed. That's the thing you got to be careful of.
Okay, now we're down to the fun stuff. Ms. DeMee Shaw and Mr. Robert Bitner are going to present the 2024 Audit Report Presentation from PB Mayor's.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to discuss our annual fiscal year audit. We're required each year by general statute to have an audit from an independent auditing firm, and PB Mars is the firm that we have used for several years. There were several different names prior to that, but we have a great working relationship with them. At your places tonight is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, a copy of the annual financial statements, and that includes opinions from the auditor. Mr. Bitner will discuss that. In addition, I emailed a required communication from Mr. Bitner and his firm. That is laid at your places. He will go over some of the highlights in that. That's a lot of technical accounting stuff in there, but that is something he enjoys doing. And the, in the financial statements, there's a tremendous amount of information in these financial statements. Since we have several new board members, I'll take a little bit of time to go over a couple of things. For those of you that have heard this multiple times, I apologize. But we have several different funds. We don't get to do things that we think would be cool and nifty and that we like. We are dictated either by accounting standards or general statutes. And tonight, we're going to focus on the General Fund, which is the main operating fund of the county. We have several different other funds. They are either dictated by an accounting standard, a statute, a bond document, such as when we sell school bonds for public school debt, that's required to be kept in a separate fund. The opioid settlement funds that should last for eighteen years, that's required to be accounted for in a separate fund. We are not going to focus on those funds tonight. There is one that Mr. Bitner just wants, there were some accounting changes on that he won't, he may want to highlight. But as we go through our budget process, we will go through and discuss these funds and discuss some of the history on these funds as we have our work groups, so that the board has a better feel for what their purpose is, particularly as we look at, you know, in our work group sessions, and we talk about our capital planning, future debt issuances, and so that discussion lends itself better to go into that detail at, at that time. So we'll focus on the General Fund, and the General Fund ended the fiscal year in a strong financial position, and that is a long history of Carteret County that we end our years in strong financial position. And then you will see that as in prior years, we have some revenues that exceeded budgets, and then you will see that there are areas of expenditures that came in less under budget. So here is a pie chart that you've seen in prior years. Revenues are broken out into categories of like items. So avalorm taxes is our largest revenue source, it's forty-eight percent. Our property taxes, the second-largest section, are other taxes, that's sales tax, and that's eighteen percent of our budget, followed by intergovernmental, which is fourteen percent. Intergovernmental is simply funds that mostly primarily come from the federal and the state, and they support our human services programs. They support social services, health, aging. They also support our CCATs transportation funds program. Sales and services is five percent, and that is mostly our solid waste fees that we collect and support solid waste program. There are a few other things, like parks and rec fees in there, civic center fees, but it's predominantly solid waste. And permits and fees are mostly registered deeds, and building inspection fees, that's a small percentage of four percent of our budget. Transfer in is from other funds, and that is occupancy tax money that comes in and supports our beach nourishment project. Other is made up of interest revenue, investment earnings, and miscellaneous. Here in this chart, if your eyes are better than mine, or you can look at it on slide number four, you will see the comparison of our amended budget to our actual, and so our total amended budget for revenues and other sources was a hundred thirty million point three, one hundred thirty point three-two million, and you will see that avalorm taxes were budgeted at fifty-eight point seven-four million, and the actual revenue received was almost sixty million. Sales tax did not perform as strongly as it has in prior years. This is the first year in sales tax that we did not exceed our budgeted estimates, and the budgeted estimate was twenty-three point three-six million, and the actual revenue was a little bit under twenty-three, it was twenty-two point nine million. Permits and fees was a little bit under budget as well. It was budgeted at five point one-nine million, and we received four point seven-eight. As interest rates had increased, it had an impact on registered deeds fees, and registered deeds fees did not perform... And registered deeds fees did not perform, they underperformed from where they had performed in prior years. When we have our budget sessions and our work groups, you will see that registered deeds is performing better. It's coming back, and that revenue is increasing. Intergovernmental was budgeted at 18.74 million, and we actually received 17.9. So these are reimbursement revenues. And so you will see when we look at our program expenses, those program expenses were under budget. So if we didn't spend the expense, didn't spend the funds, then we don't get reimbursed from the federal and the state. So that goes, it's pretty hand in hand. Other revenue is 10.42, and actual received was 13.22. The main driver in that of exceeding the budget estimate was investment earnings. And we received 4.66 million in investment earnings. That's significant because we had gone through so many years of investment rates being very low and not getting a good rate of return. And one cent on the property tax rate is around, or a little bit over 1.7 million. So 4.66, you know, is greater than, what, two, two and a half cents on the tax rate. Total revenues received were 124.6 million. If you look at expenditures, expenditures are divided into categories of like things together. As you would expect, education is our largest function of government, that's 28%. Education funds the community college as well as the public school system. Human services is the second largest, which is DSS, health, aging, veteran services programs. And it's followed by public safety, which is emergency services, fire marshal, emergency communications, as well as the sheriff's division. And then you'll see that there's smaller areas, the general government's 11%, cultural and recreation is our parks at 4%, debt service is at 6%, except for a very small amount of debt service, which is for some leases and some IT subscription items. All of our debt service is for public school system. Environmental protection is public works and our solid waste expenses. And then economic development is 3%. If you look at the chart, it does the amended final budget compared to the actual. And if you look, and you'll see it on the next slide too, and we'll drill down a little bit more, but every category of expense came in under budget. And then we'll have a slide that will look at what were the driving forces of why we were under budget in each one of these categories. But human services was 24.28 million budgeted, and we spent 21.62. So you see the relationship of the intergovernmental revenue that we didn't receive on the revenue slot. And then if you look at education, public schools, this does not include the debt service or the transfer for their school capital that we budgeted 27.63 million. The community college was 5.63 million. And you see, they only spent 3.84. You remember they had that problem with their boiler near the end of the fiscal year, and we went and we did an additional emergency appropriation for them? They did not, there was no way possible to complete that project by June 30th. So thus, a lot of the lapse funded there that was not spent. And then you see debt service, nondepartmental is transfers to other funds, and it has contingency in there as well. But the transfers to the other funds is like for our capital improvement fund and school capital and those type items. The budget balances, total expenses budgeted was 130.32 million, and actual expenditures were 113.69 million. So if you look at the actual revenue and subtract the actual expenditures and other sources, then revenues and other sources exceeded the expenditures by 10.91 million. So all money is not available to go spend, and we have funds that we get that are restricted. Fund balance is divided into several different main categories. And it's four main categories. And the first one we're going to look at is restricted fund balance. And that is pretty much that is restricted by state statute. The largest item in our restricted fund balance is restricted for beach nourishment. That you take the occupancy tax money in statute that comes for beach nourishment, you subtract the departmental expenditures, and whatever's left over has to be restricted for future beach nourishment projects. That increased, the net increase between the two restrictions was 5.35 million. Beach nourishment, that restriction increased 7.65 million from fiscal year '23. We had a restricted by state statute, that's dictated by the General Assembly of how to do that calculation. And that restriction decreased 2.4 million. Committed fund balance is where we have appropriated funds for the revaluation project. If any of those are not spent, they're required to be committed. So that balance increased 0.42 million. Assigned fund balance is the amount of money that we balance our budget with. So when we balanced the budget for fiscal year '23, '24, it was 4.3 million. When we adopted, when the board adopted the budget for fiscal year '25, 5.5 million was appropriated to balance the budget. So that increased 1.2 million. And so that left 3.94 million of unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is just that. It's not assigned for a specific purpose, and we can use it for whatever item comes up. If we had a grant opportunity. The community college had that large maintenance, significant maintenance issue. That's where that money came from. The school system, when they have chillers that they need to be emergency replaced, that's where those appropriations come from. When we balance our budget, that we're taking it out of that assigned fund balance number. And if you look at the bottom part of that chart, you'll see that last year's audited unassigned fund balance was 43.12 million. And then we increased it 3.94 million this year. And we had an ending audited balance of 47.06 million. That is on 43.88% of our general fund expenditures. That's a significant category that our rating agencies look at. And that helps with our bond ratings, and particularly with the capital projects we're looking at. That's a very key factor for us, and that's a very positive indicator for us. The other thing about our unassigned fund balance, if we have hurricanes or natural disasters, that's where we upfront our money for, until we get reimbursed by the federal government. When we had Hurricane Florence, we up fronted about 16 million just for Carteret County Government. The school system had, they had significant damage, they had some cash flow issues. We upfronted money to them to help them. Fire departments, that we have done the same thing with them. There is an extremely long lifetime for getting your money back from FEMA. And FEMA has it in different categories. When you hit different thresholds, then it takes longer to get it back. You have to go through multiple layers of review. And so the more layers of review, the longer you've got to upfront money. If you look on the next slide and how we ended up with the amount of funds going into fund balance, you can see a quick summary of revenues. Avalorm was 1.25 million, greater than budgeted. Investment earnings was the most significant, of 3.56 million. Other revenue was 0.11 million. Our other categories were under budget by 1.58 million. So we had revenues greater than the budget of a net amount of 3.34 million. And if you look at expenditures, this on the next slide, this breaks out categories. And, you know, we've been looking at this for the last few years. Salaries and benefits, which the previous manager, the current manager, we've been talking about our turnover rate, it is having a significant impact. 3.98 million dollars of lapse salary and benefits occurred in last fiscal year. When we talk about the upcoming year in our work group sessions, it's still close to 3.5 million dollars. It's going to lapse this year. I know we're working to address that, but that's a significant amount. We had some maintenance projects for various reasons, didn't get completed and didn't occur. So that was 1.12 million. Other operations was just 1.72. And then we had about 1.94 million of capital. A lot of that in capital goes back to the community college project that there was no way possible for them to get completed. And when you subtract out the fund balance that was appropriated, we started with 4.3 million. By June 30th, our appropriated fund balance had increased to 8.16 million. And when you have to, when you offset that amount, that gives you the 3.94 million that increased on assigned fund balance. I know that's a lot of information, gone through really fast. I'll be glad to answer questions. I know you've just looked at the PowerPoint. I'll be glad if you wanted to contact me. I'll be glad to go over information in more detail at your convenience.
Thank you, Dee. Are there any questions from the board?
I have plenty of questions in the breakout session.
Thank you, Dee. Ladies and gentlemen, how are you doing this evening?
Great.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. We're going to start on page one and move through the end. In any case, I was really hoping to have this really packed room to do this presentation. It's not very often that people come in to hear an audit presentation like that, so a little bit disappointed. But anyway, just to point out, introduce myself again. My name is Robbie Bitner. I'm an audit partner with PB Mayors here in Moritz City. We have been performing the audit for the county as McGladrey and Pollin, McGladrey, RSM, and now PB Mayors, at least for the past 15 years, if not more than that. Longer than my tenure at PB Mayors. With that, I want to first off, start off by saying thank you to Ms. Michelle and their team. We are a bit of a thorn when we come in. We ask for a lot of documents, ask for a lot of information. We dig, we pry, and we bug, and we send people over here to knock on doors. And they're always so accommodating to us, so we really do appreciate that. It makes our job that much easier. So let's start off, as auditors, we're charged with issuing and rendering an opinion on your financial statements as to whether or not they are fairly presented in accordance with Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, or GAAP, as prescribed by the Government Accounting Standards Board. So with that, we can issue four types of opinions. We can disclaim an opinion, which means that we did not see enough information to even render opinion one way or another. We can issue the adverse opinion, which is the worst opinion we can provide, which is where we believe that your financial statements are not fairly presented in accordance with Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. We can issue the modified opinion, which is where we believe that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with GAAP except for one item. And the highest level of assurance that we can provide as external auditors is the unmodified or clean opinion, which the county did receive this year and has for quite many years from then. One item I do want to point out to you as it relates to the audit opinion this year. We did have two items of restatement this year. Our opinion was not modified with respect to those matters. One being related to the implementation of GASB statement number 100. This is whereby it now dictates that a change within the reporting entity or major funds as they're presented in the statements requires a restatement. So we did have a change in those major funds this year. One being the opioid settlement crisis, that was also the result of another error that had to be corrected. Now, when I say error, this is an error based on the timing of information that came from the state down to the local level. So by the time we, or I say we, by the time the county received the information related to the overall receivable amount and the deferred revenue amount that needed to be in place, the financial statements had already been issued last year. So therefore, we needed to restate the beginning balance of that receivable as it relates to the opioid. With that, it also, the deferred revenue that got put on, in place related to the opioid, triggered that fund to be a major fund. So it's just an item that's a little bit different. It's an extra paragraph, not modified, did not modify our opinion, but something just need to bring your attention to. In addition to our opinion on the financial statements, in accordance with government auditing standards, we also issue a report on your compliance with laws, regulations, grants, contracts, as well as identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control as it relates to the preparation of the financial statements. Go through really quickly the levels of deficiency here. You have, the highest deficiency that you can have is a material weakness in internal control. This is a deficiency in the controls that has had the opportunity or has actually caused a material misstatement in the financial statements which had to be corrected. You can have a significant deficiency, does not rise to the level of material weakness, but still warrants attention by those charged with governance, in this case, the board. And then the lowest level that we have would be a deficiency. Those are not required to be reported within the Government Auditing Standards Report. But it is something typically we would either point out in a, just a verbal communication and/or a management letter directly to management, which would be included in the letter that you received from us in our communications. Happy to say there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses or any instances of material noncompliance that needed to be identified as it relates to the financial statements this year. All right, so any questions there on the financial statements before we move to compliance?
Point of clarification, so any county that received any settlement money with the opioid would all have the same finding?
Potentially, yes. It just depends on the size and the materialities that relates to that. So your larger counties did receive, did have restatements as it related to that.
That was like, I just want to address that everybody should, that received any major amount of money should have the exact same finding across the state.
Well, it's not really a finding. It's just a restatement. So we did not issue any kind of finding or weakness because there was no weakness. As soon as it was identified, it was, when I say identified, as soon as the state told everybody, it was taken, appropriate measures were taken right then and there.
A procedure anomaly?
Yes.
No, not with the state, it's not.
In any case, yes, sir. You would, if you pull a lot of your larger counties within the state, you will see restatements as it relates to those opioid funds. As well as you would see with the implementation of GASB statement 100, a ton of restatements as it relates to the change within the reporting entity. It's actually quite the headache to do.
I hate going around with that, changing from major to non-major. We'll probably have that most years.
Yes. So that is something you are likely going to see every year to every other year, a restatement as it relates to a change within the reporting entity as large grants come in, as large projects take place related to the funds and how everything is particularly budgeted. So just be aware, that's something that will be coming.
We can move on. It's one of that for the record.
Yes, sir. So compliance. In addition to our opinion on the financial statements as well as our Government Auditing Standards Report, we are also issue our opinion on your compliance with your federal and state grant programs that are determined to be major under the Uniform Guidance and the State Single Audit Implementation Act. Happy to say that we issued an unmodified opinion on that compliance. And we did have one material weakness as it relates to the internal control over the Medicaid program, and that's the eligibility determination. We did not have any identified compliance violation that needed to be reported. However, this has been an ongoing finding for years as it relates to the tedious administrative pieces that the state requires as it relates to the determination of Medicaid eligibility. And as we come out of And as we come out of COVID and we're finally actually, people are having to determine eligibility on an annual basis versus just continuing and reaching back almost three to four years at times for eligibility determinations. So a lot of the controls and processes that have been put in place will likely be seen more as we go through the immediate determination. So also, just to note, none of the direct benefits as it relates to the Medicaid program are within the financial statements or are reported on the scheduled expenditures of federal awards. So with that, like I said, happy to report we had no material compliance violations. And this is on the federal and state level. We did have that one material weakness at the federal and state level and no other identified significant efficiencies or material weaknesses as it relates to them. Okay. From there, I'm going to point you to the letter that Dee mentioned earlier. This is our, what used to be called Statement Auditing Standards 114. It's now AUC 216 letter. This is our required communications of those charged with governance. And I'm not going to hit everything in here because there are some technical items. But there are a few things that I do feel like we need to highlight. First and foremost, as I mentioned previously, but there was a restatement as it relates to GASB number 100, as well as the correction of an error. You'll see that those were pointed out within here. We did not identify any significant unusual transactions and did not have any significant difficulties dealing with management as it relates to performing our audit. We did not have, we are not aware of any consultants with other accountants, and we didn't have any major disagreements, as I mentioned. One new section within this document that you may not have seen in the previous years is there's a whole page now on page three that describes not only our responsibility for independence, but also the county's responsibility for independence in letting us know of any new joint ventures or potential component units and that sort of thing as it goes down. Just identifying that it is a two-way streak on that independent side of things. The last thing I'm going to point out is, as you probably recall, when we prepare the data input form to submit the audit report to the Local Government Commission, there is a tab on there that is called Performance Indicators. It is the final attachment that is on this document. And within, it notes whether or not you have what they call a performance indicator of concern. It highlights red automatically based on the inputs that go into that document, and we cannot change it. So even if there's a misspelling, we can't go edit it, and we're supposed to print it out and provide it to you. We did have one performance indicator of concern this year, and it relates to the timing of the audit. As you probably recall, the audits have traditionally been due at September, excuse me, October 31st with an automatic extension to November 30th. The county did release this year in mid-February. Dee and I have already discussed about next year's plan, and there was a part of that was on, part of the delay this year was on our part. We had a death in our, in our team that resulted in us being a little bit delayed. However, I do want to report as well, the Local Government Commission deadline has actually been extended now. So the LGC deadline for all audits next year will no longer be a October 31st with an extended deadline to November 30th. All will be due 12/31. We do not want to have that go to 12/31. Much rather be done in mid-November before Thanksgiving would be the ultimate goal. The last thing I want to do is have people trying to get an audit report out between Christmas and New Year's. So but with that, other things to be aware of as they come down the pipe. This coming year, the county will be required to implement GASB statement 201, which is related to compensated absences, whereby the county will have to determine a portion of the sick leave balance, although it does not technically vest like vacation. Any identified amounts that may be paid out in cash and/or used as sick, there has to be an evaluation on the estimate of what that value is as it relates to that. There's also GASB statements number 102 through 104. They will not be effective this year. However, there are some items in there that are just mostly clarification items and some things that may change the NDNA just ever so slightly, but nothing of real significance as it relates to the county. Especially given that the water system is no longer here, since most of the changes were in the business type activities. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions as it relates to anything we've discussed.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bitner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have the presentation of the property tax reevaluation, Mr. Ryan Vincent. Ryan Vincent.
All right. Thank you. All right. My name is Ryan Vincent. Been working with the county on the property tax reappraisal. So tonight, we're going to go over a little bit of a summary presentation for the reappraisal. We're getting ready to mail notices here next week to all of the property owners in the county. So reappraisal is the process in which we bring all property values up to current market value as of a particular day. And this is all real estate, which is the land and anything permanently affixed thereto. It does not include personal property. So market value is the most probable price that a willing buyer and a willing seller will pay on an open and competitive market. What that means is basically if somebody lists it, somebody looks at it, and purchases it. It's important to remember that the tax office does not create market value. We're simply taking a snapshot of the actions of buyers and sellers in the marketplace. So a few basic steps to reappraisal. First one is the data collection phase. So that's where we go out and measure all of the properties in the county, collect all of the information. That information then comes into the office and is entered into the system and analyzed. And from there, we develop models and build schedules to mimic that market, mimic the actions of the buyers and sellers in the market. And the last major phase is the appeals phase, which is still forthcoming. So one of the biggest tests we look at is called the sales ratio. So that's taking the assessed value divided by the sale price. And state law tells us that we have to appraise it to be 100% of market value, meaning if it's sold, we should appraise it as close to 100% of that sale price as possible. So a short disclaimer here. The numbers we're about to share are, there's a range. There is a range because we are still working on these values until we mail notices. And once we mail notices out, there is going to be, again, an appeal process for everybody to appeal should they choose to do so. So at the onset of the project, DOR, Department of Revenue, and our professional organizations tell us that our sales ratio should be between 90 and 110%, or as close to 100 as possible. And a COD, which I'll explain in a second, between 10 and 15. So our sales ratio results for this reappraisal, there was 3,808 valid sales in the years 2023 and 2024. Our median or our middle point on those 3,800 sales was 99.43%. And our average sale ratio was 101.01. And our COD was 7.61. Now, what COD does is it determines the spread of those 3,800 sales from that median or that average point. So another way to look at it is the overall average countywide change is projected to be between 80 and 90%. Now, I really want to stress that that is the previous year's valuation to the current year's valuation. So you're going to have some properties, and we have some slides upcoming here. You're going to have some properties that went up more than that, and you're going to have some properties that didn't go up that much. So we have 91% of the properties in the county increased by more than 15%. We have 5% of the properties that will have a lower value than the previous year by more than 15%. And 4% of the properties changed by less than 15%, plus or minus. So the next slide here, your tax bill is made up of two parts, the appraised value and the tax rate. So we're responsible for the appraised value or the assessed value. The board, the town boards, the fire districts are responsible for the tax rate. So we don't know what the tax rate is going to be yet. The board doesn't know what the tax rate is going to be yet. So that is still forthcoming. A few examples of some changes that we've seen. So these are sales that have occurred. So we have a home in Harker's Island that was assessed for 220. It's sold in December of '24 for 340. That's an increase of 54%. In Morhead, there was a house built in 2005, was assessed for 498, sold for 870, and that's an increase of 75%. Newport, this particular home was assessed at 147, sold for 275. That's an increase of 87%. Coming to Beaufort, this house is a little bit older, 1832, was assessed for 520, sold for 1.1. That's an increase of 121%. In Emerald Isle, this one was built in 1996, was assessed for 586,000, sold in September of '24 for 1.3. That's an increase of 122%. And the last one was a fairly new construction, was assessed for 474, sold for 1.4. That's an increase of 205%. So here's just a quick slide of what the change of value notice is going to look like when these go out next week. So it will have the owner's name. It will have the parcel number, the physical address of the property, and it will have the value. On the front, it will have the next steps that I'm about to describe, what to do if you have questions about your value. And on the back, it also has further explanation of reappraisal and the reappraisal process. So when you get your change of value notice in the mail and you have questions, we ask you to follow a three-step process. The first step is to go online and review your information. We're creating a website where all this information is online. We ask that you go online and look at your bedrooms, your bathrooms, your square footage. And if anything is incorrect, please let us know, and we can address that. Once you've reviewed your information, we're creating an additional website that has all of the sales, all of those 3,800 sales I described earlier on a map. So you can go and search by your neighborhood, by your property size, and see what other parcels in your area of similar type houses are selling for. And if you've reviewed your information, you've compared it to other sales in the area, and you still have questions or would like to file an appeal, you can do that online. You can also come into the tax office. We'd be happy to help you fill out the form within the tax office. So a couple of things, if you do choose to appeal, we ask that the appeals be based on the value of the property and not the change from the previous value or the potential impacts of the expected tax bills. Again, we don't know what those are going to be. One thing here, there are some programs that are issued to us through the state that are, the limits are set by the state, that help with property tax relief. So if you know anybody who might qualify for any of those programs, there's a veterans program, there's an elderly and disabled program. If you know anybody who might qualify, please have them contact the tax office. We'd be happy to walk them through if they qualify or not. And again, those limits are set by the state. They're not set by the county. So if you do choose to file an appeal, we ask a couple of things. The biggest thing is that we really need some sort of evidence. That evidence could be sales from the website, the county website. That could be a recent fee appraisal you might have got from a refinance or a purchase. If it's a commercial-based property, any sort of income and expense statement, if it's a shopping center you rent out or an apartment complex. And if there's anything wrong with the property, there's a leaky roof, storm damage, foundation problems, we ask for photos or any evidence pertaining to the repair costs of those issues. So to recap, if you have any data errors, those can be addressed fairly quickly. If you know someone who might qualify for one of the property tax relief programs, please have them contact the tax office. We can walk them through the qualifications and the process to get involved in those programs. Appeals should be based on value and not the change in value from the previous year. And a few key dates. So we plan to mail notices on March 26th, which is next week. The first day that the Board of Equalization will meet is April 7th. The Board of E&amp;R will adjourn on May 2nd at 5:00 p.m. And the first tax bills impacted by this reappraisal will go out in August of this year. So again, all appeals should be submitted by May 2nd, 5:00 p.m. It's important to remember that your appeal is due that day. But once your appeal's in, it will be heard. It might not be heard until a later day, but it will be heard. And I'll open up for any questions.
I mean, I'll just repeat them. I said it the last time, and it obviously didn't get picked up very well. But you're talking about the values may increase by 80% to 90%. But in most cases, whether it's municipality or the county government, it's revenue neutral from that point. If our tax rate is 34 cents, our tax rate should lower down by whatever that percentage is, minus the holdback for any appeals that may go through for the collections. Anything above that revenue neutral fund is increasing taxes, and that would be decided on this board during budget season, prior to June 30th, when the budget would have to be adopted or end, and municipality is the same. Just because your property is increasing by that much in value does not mean your tax rate or your tax bill is going up by that much. I'd like to reiterate that. Just because your property value's not going up doesn't mean what you're going to owe is going to go up by that much. That means the rate should decrease, which should offset any of that cost. I don't know why that doesn't make it out of this room, but I'm going to repeat it again, hoping that it will.
Anyone else? What was it we were asking in the back room about?
Well, it's more or less his statement. As far as the way in which that sliding tax bill applies.
Yeah, it's actually an equation.
Yep.
Rate, tax rate times tax value equals taxes. Anything on the right-hand side of the equals sign goes up, your taxes will raise.
This board is going to do all it can to get the rate as close to revenue neutral as possible.
And I was educated in Carter County Schools. I understand math.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the presentation of the jail diversion program with the Hope Mission folks. I see Pastor Gene there, and he has a new head man. Mr. John, I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce your last name because I know you're not from Williston or Betty or anywhere.
Sartarkis.
Sartarkis.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
This presentation is in your red folder. If anybody wants to follow along on that, if you want to see the screen.
What we'd like to do tonight is talk a little bit about the jail diversion program, specifically about the content of the program and what we're doing within our jail diversion. Currently, from March 1st of '24 to February 28th of '25, we've had 43 clients that have come through. We've provided 6,080 bed nights. Out of the first 90 days completed, 33. That was a total of 87%. The second 90 days of completion, 25. That was 83%. During that time, they're receiving the basic life needs as required, SAMSA-based curriculum, and clinical services. So what we had begun doing was, as a client comes to us for that six months of jail diversion, what we're focusing on is building a strong foundation in their recovery. So when they come to us, we remove all the distractions while they're there. They're focusing on mental health, clinical services. We're focused on home health, community, and laying the groundwork for that next stage of purpose. That second phase, when they can stay with us for longer if they choose to, seven to 12 months. During that time, they're working with a peer support specialist that lives with them. And a peer support specialist are our staff who have lived in recovery for a year or more, and they've gone, and they've been certified through the state. We run them through additional training. We run them through additional training while they're with us, our peer support specialists. So those individuals are living with all these clients and working with them day-to-day. So everything that they're learning during that time, whether it's at substance abuse intensive outpatient treatment or their mental health, their trauma-based treatment, they're working with that peer support specialist to help comprehend, understand what they're learning and how they're gonna apply it to their daily lives. During that time, we're also working with them for a transition plan, right? So we don't want them just stepping out into the world with what little bit that they've gotten during that time. We want them to go out with as many tools in their toolbox as possible. So we're working on a transition plan. What does your education look like? What does your housing situation look like? Transportation, education, employment, things of that nature. We wanna see someone leave us with a career vice just a job. So when we realize that during a more comprehensive plan, we see more success with an individual that spends a longer time in a safe place, in an incremental step. That first step, they're going through their clinical services. That second step, they're going ahead and moving into taking what they've learned and applying it into their lives, still in a safe surrounding and with people that they've grown relationships with. And what we've added to our programming when someone comes to us, a lot of what we do, we've realized, was based off of SAMSA's best practices for residential living. So we've realized that bringing in different types of trainings help them understand and help our peers articulate what those things that have happened to them in the past could be an underlying factor, if there's dual diagnosis, and how they can apply what they've learned, their coping mechanisms, things like that, into a life of sobriety. So we've incorporated GED programming, the Wellness Recovery Action Plan. That's a great program that we've got clients going through where they can learn everything and understand about the addiction. We have mental health first aid, the moral recognition therapy. That is a program that we just started and that re-trains the mind from a life of living one way to making positive decisions, making sure that they understand their decisions have consequences, what those consequences could be, things of that nature. We incorporate conflict resolution. Everybody needs that one. We do question persuade and refer, which is a basic suicide awareness teaching that we do with all clients. And we also go into assist, Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training, specifically with our staff, so that they can recognize someone that may be in a mental health crisis. Along with that, clients are receiving their materials. They're getting recovery kits, is what we're calling them, where they're getting the Recovery Bible workbook, different types of material during their time while they're with us, based off of SAMSA's Eight Dimensions of Wellness. If they rate it, they all get Medicaid enrollment when they get to us if they don't have it. We also help them get their vital documents because when they leave us, we know that they're gonna need careers, they're gonna need housing, transportation, things of that nature. We also assist with transportation for appointments to dental, vision, doctor's appointments or court. We assist with our emergency financial assistance programs in the event that they do go to a doctor's appointment or a dental appointment, optometry appointment, and they need a copay. And that's contingent upon each need. Again, they all receive personal therapy and we have a couple specialists that come in and do it, also focus on sexual assault counseling, trauma, abuse, anything with anxiety, depression, grief, PTSD. And we're also working with the literacy council to make sure that everyone is able to have an appropriate reading and writing education. And then we also use our emergency financial assistance for non-Maidade and that's also contingent upon the need. Do I have any questions?
So you're increasing from six months to a year. Is this the first time these other board members are hearing about that?
What we're doing right now is we're offering the second six months for someone when they wanna come and stay with us, similar to how an Oxford House is set up. So they can move into one of our transitional houses and stay with a peer support specialist or house manager with a regular governmental entity within that house. They govern their own activities and things of that nature. But we're currently at different tracks that we have offered right now to the clients.
How long has that additional six-month program been available to your clients?
We started in November.
And how are your houses, how are your beds, what are your bed rates? How many people do you have and how many beds do you have?
We currently have 32 beds that are filled and we have about six more that are incoming within the next week. And we can host 60 beds, 60 individuals.
I don't have a question, but I attended the fundraiser at the community, got one of the civic centers the other day.
Empty bowls.
What was the name of it?
Empty bowls.
Very nice. A lot of your clients were there working and very well-attended. You're doing a good job. Yes, sir.
Thank you, John. You'll be hearing and seeing this before long, but Hope Mission of Coastal Carolina's been recognized by DHHS that funds particularly for us, mental health and first aid. And they've awarded us two major grants. One is for $1.3 million to open a respite home here, which is the fourth respite home in the state of North Carolina, supported by DHHS. And that's basically, it will operate very similar like an Airbnb. If somebody's in the mental health profession, needs a week off for up to 14 days, they can come stay in our home that we'll be buying an opening for that. They also give us, in that 1.3, we will be opening what's called a peer living room. It will be a resting place for people that are on the streets or in just wherever, whatever they may be in life, to be able to come and have a place to read and watch TV and relax and play pool and ping pong, all that kind of stuff here within our city. And they also granted us $4 million to build a new facility where we're at. We'll be tearing down our Hope Mission soup kitchen that we've had for 100 million years, right there on Bridges Street. And we'll be building a brand-new facility that will house 30 beds there along with our other seven properties that we own throughout our county. So all of this has to do with justice involved individuals, with substance use, with homelessness that we excel in here in our county. As a voice of those who are in poverty and homelessness and substance abuse. And that is a population that we all get, we all have great concern about. There are many that are living in homeless camps tonight, have been for a while. Many of them wanna be there and when we serve them, we give them that privilege. We provide whatever we can to be able to help. But if they want to stay there, we allow them that. If they need to get out, and many of these are moms and dads with children, we do motels, we do those kinds of things to help them engage in a safer environment than what they're in. And so we're so grateful for Sheriff Ace Buck and for you as county commissioners for allowing us to do those kinds of services. It has been a great journey for us and the things that the sheriff has allowed us to do in our county jail here has allowed us to go also into Craven County, where we provide the same services there. Also into Onslow County, where we provide the same services there. Also in Pamlico County, we provide the same services there. So right now, we have peer support specialists. They're working in 12 counties here in rural eastern North Carolina. And our ultimate goal is we're working to get into all those counties where we will have homes in them, we will have people that work in substance use as well as mental health arenas throughout our rural counties here in eastern North Carolina. So we're just very grateful for the privilege that you guys have given us to start this. Four years ago, Ace?
About five years.
About five years ago. Without you guys doing that, we could have never done that. So thank you for your generosity and your kindness and the ability that you have allowed us, through the sheriff's office, to help those who, for whatever reason, have ended up in jail. We're also in three local prisons. For whatever reason, we're not concerned so much about the reason. We wanna help them to help get out and to figure out why they got in, so they don't have to go back in. And so we provide specialists of all kinds to come in and work with our clients. And again, that is all because of this county and its generosity and the openness of doing something that nobody else was doing here in eastern North Carolina when it comes to jail diversion. So again, we just wanna say thank you. And you'll hear a lot more about that. And when we tear our buildings down, we'll give you an opportunity to come get a picture sitting on a bulldozer. So, and then when we open ground, you'll have the privilege to come by and sit with us as we shovel dirt for the first time in a long time for a little bitty soup kitchen that 23 years ago, when my wife and I walked in, it was not the very best place you would wanna go eat. But today, it's the best soup kitchen in North America. So we didn't buy you to come have a free lunch with us and a great soup kitchen. So thank you again for all that you've done for us and for the privilege you've allowed of serving the citizens here in Carteret County.
Gene, how were you served during the interim, when you tear down the facility?
Well, we also, as you guys have allowed us to have a peer recovery center, we have a complete commercial kitchen there that we'll be doing some out. We have contacted a couple of local churches that have fully commercial kitchens that we'll be using. And we're also looking at purchasing a fully portable commercial kitchen that we will use to prepare all of our food to be able to serve our population as we do right now. And Mark, the greatest population that we believe that we're serving today is we have 73 homebound seniors that we serve six days a week, that we prepare food and go into their homes and serve them. And through that, that has allowed us to be able to become caregivers for many of our seniors whose children have grown and gone and they're there kinda by themselves. And so we have people that come in and clean their houses for them, come in and take them to the doctors, to the dentist. They become like adopted children to our senior population. And as you know, our senior population is growing here in our county and we are committed to help them as they have helped us. And so our Meals on Wheels population is just booming and we have a lot of people on our waiting list. It takes a lot of drivers to be able to manage all of that kinda stuff. So we do that at no cost. It doesn't cost anybody one penny for us to take a meal six days a week into their homes and to be able to serve them, providing other kinds of services that we do. We're just grateful that we're able to do that kinda stuff.
Gene, I'd like to, you're here thanking us, but I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you and your team for all you do. I appreciate all the starfish you've thrown back in the water and I hope y'all keep slinging them.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity. We couldn't do it without the citizens of our county volunteering, thousands and thousands of hours of volunteer, over almost 300 volunteers every month that come into one of our ministries, serving the citizens here in our county. So we're just very grateful to have the privilege to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Pastor Gene, before you leave, not to put Ace, Sheriff Buck, on the awkward moment, but since this is the jail diversion, is there anything that Ace, that Sheriff Buck should...
Don't ask him.
Don't give him a microphone. He'll be back during budget season, don't give him a microphone.
Since we're partnership, I would like to hear the other partner. Thank you.
Good evening, good buddy.
Well, I would just like, I don't have to say it, 'cause anybody knows Gene McClendon knows that he's a tenacious fella. And if he wants to see something accomplished, he'll find a way to do it. And Gene and I have been working together for many years. And he's been after me to do some things and we've worked together and we've been working on our jail diversion program for many years, way back, just starting out small and coming up with ideas and trying to figure things out. And we've been working together formally for five or six years. And like you said, Commissioner Mansfield, I would like to thank Gene and John and everybody else with Hope Mission and Hope Foundation with what they do. They do a tremendous service for our entire county in many different ways, but specifically with what they do with regard to our jail diversion program. I was just looking at the numbers last week and since 2019, this, or people who come to jail and then are allowed to go to recovery programs here in our county, Hope Recovery Homes and some others. Since 2019, we've had 227 people go into that program. Not everybody who goes into a program successfully completes the program. Overall, we have a 30% success rate out of all 227. Of the 144 people who have graduated a six-month program, to this day, going back to 2019, 70 of those people have remained clean, not committing new offenses, not returning to the jail, not using drugs, not out here doing things to hurt themselves or victimize anyone else in our community. And that's a 46% success rate. And if you look at a lot of recovery programs, you'll see success rates far lower than what we've experienced working together with our local programs right here in our community. And so I'm very proud of the work that's been done by all of our recovery programs, especially Hope Mission and what we do through our sheriff's office and our local justice system, our partnership through the DA's office, our judges, the local attorneys that we all work together to select people to put into our program. Every Friday, members of Hope Recovery Homes come to our jail and we have a mentoring program with males and female inmates. And we do a real good job, we try to do the best job we can of vetting them through a selection process to make sure that we find people that are serious about getting into recovery and then working with the courts and allowing those folks to go to our local recovery programs and hopefully have good outcomes down the road. And through the deputies, through my electronic monitoring and pre-trial release program, we try to stay in contact with people and we track. Obviously, we know if someone returns back to our jail. It's very easy for us to get that information. Sometimes it's difficult to follow up with people down the road 'cause you lose track with people, you don't have their telephone number, you can't make contact with them. But as far as tracking recidivism, we're very good at that because we know who comes back to our jail. And I'm very proud of what everybody has done. And I have to give you all tremendous credit for the funding that you provide that supports that program. I really do appreciate it. It helps us to get people out of our jail and a lot of people who don't necessarily need to just be sitting in the county jail just waiting for their court date. And this allows folks to get out of the jail and actually receive services that can benefit them and certainly at a level that we could not, even if we wanted to provide these types of services in our jail, the facility just doesn't allow that. And so for people to be able to go and enter these recovery programs and get the tools that they need to get their lives back on track and go back to becoming, return to being productive members of society, it is a win-win-win all the way around. And I greatly appreciate all the work that's been done by everybody in our partnership. And again, appreciate what this board has done for many years and continues to do to support all of our efforts. Was that enough? Did I talk too much?
That was enough, thank you, Sheriff.
Right on our short wings, my short wings have been.
All right. Unless anybody has any questions, I'll return my seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Gene. John, you got big shoes to fill, following in the big guy's steps there, leading the program. We appreciate all you do for us. Next is the managers' report. We got good news.
Thank you. We do have some good news and I'm gonna try to get through this without my allergy cough acting up, but please forgive me if it does. We are welcoming tonight our new IT Director, Ben Herring, who's sitting over in the corner, he's gonna get embarrassed now, and our new Assistant County Manager, who started his first day of work today, Matt Reynall. And both are tremendous professionals with lots of experience they're bringing our way. We're very, very happy that they're here with us in Carteret County. Also, I wanted to announce a very special group of folks that we're gonna be recognizing April 13th through 19th as 911 Telecommunicators Week. These are really our very first... These are really our very first responders. These folks who take the emergency calls from our citizens have such a difficult job, and they sit in the same place for about twelve-hour shifts and have to really pay attention and, and stay empathetic and stay on point, and they're important to keep even our other first responders safe and to know where to send deputies and where to send EMS. And we really appreciate them. An announcement for taxes, and tonight, of course, we talked about revow, which is about your valuation changes. Those notices are going out March twenty-sixth. Keep in mind, that's not a, that's not a tax bill, that's just a correction of the value, up to market value. But importantly, if you haven't paid your property taxes that were already due, the ones that were due from the bill back this past August or in prior years, we really encourage you to come in now and pay those immediately. We are sending foreclosure notices out. So, it's important that you go ahead and pay your taxes. We want everybody to pay what's owed so that our Board of Commissioners can keep the tax rate as low as possible. Parks and Rec wanted to recognize their youth basketball. The season just concluded, seven hundred kids in the Carteret County area participated in this program this year. We'd like to especially congratulate the fourteen U boys and the twelve U girls. They represented Carteret County and came in second place in the regional All-Star tournaments. So, really excited for these kids getting involved in something that's good for them. Our North Carolina State Senior Games will start in Carteret County also on March twenty-fourth, and we wish all of our participants good luck in that. Economic developments here this evening, they joined with other agencies and recently hosted a job fair here in Carteret County on March sixth. We had a hundred-and-forty-one job seekers who came out and were enthusiastically participating, and a hundred-and-thirty of our employers showed up. So, that was a really great job fair. Also, the quarterly Women in Business Brunch and Learn is going to be on Thursday, March twentieth, if you haven't signed up yet. And finally, an announcement from Public Works, the latex paint recycling program. So, if you've got cans of paint that you haven't used, won't be able to use, and you would like to get rid of that old latex paint and start cleaning out your garage the entire month of April, you can bring that to Hibbs Road or to the Otway Convenience Site. And all of that that's usable is actually donated to Habitat for Humanity. So, it's a really good thing to do, to clean out your garage and to also help somebody else. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Madam Manager. Next is board appointments. The Consolidated Human Services Board. Looks like we have an applicant, Mr. Ben Horton. All in favor of Mr. Horton? Mr. Horton's appointed. Next is the Carteret County Scenic Byway Committee. Ms. Myla Guthrie will finish out the appointment to that board, seven members. All in favor of Ms. Guthrie? Guthrie has it. Next is Carteret County Beach Commission, Kyle Logus, to a three-year term. All in favor of Mr. Logus?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a she.
Yeah, yeah, I said Mrs.
All right. I didn't have my glasses on. All in favor of Ms. Logus? She has it. Next is Commissioner Comment. Commissioner Walter. Well, you want me to start down here with Commissioner Clark? Welcome back. You were under the weather last month, and we missed you, so we'll let you go first.
I'll keep it brief. I'm going to, of course, congratulate the, the recipients of the January, February, and March Employee of the Month awards. But I'm going to go off track a little bit because I'm sure you all will have plenty to say on what, what happened tonight. But I'm going to, I would, I want to give a little plug for our local hospital. Carteret General takes a lot of grief, and a lot of times, it doesn't get the, the accolades that I believe it deserves. I was a, I was one of their candidates, one of their clients, a month or so ago with, in pretty bad way, when I arrived at the hospital and had to be admitted, and they didn't know me from Adam. I didn't go in there saying, I'm the county commissioner, you've got to take care of me, blah, 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 just Joe Schmo. And they, all along the way, they immediately got my blood oxygen level where it needed to be and took really good care of me. And the hospital, you know, living here as long as I have, there's always, no one's, no one's quick to say something good about something, but the hospital really took good care of me and got me going, and got me back on track. And a young lady in the, in the ER, the ER nurse, her name was Tiffany, she was just fantastic, and, you know, when you're, when you're feeling that bad, just a kind word helps. And the young lady, Marissa, also the, the nurse that took care of me for a couple of days, they just, they just did a real nice job. So, I just wanted to put on the record that I really appreciate Carteret General. They took good care of me and kept me going so I could be here tonight. So, thank you very much to all that, that helped me, and thank you for letting me put in a plug for our local hospital. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Shin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start off. I'd like to just comment on Mr. Nelson Paul's presentation or comments tonight with the ditches and the waterways. I heard as late as this morning, there is some effort to redefine what is considered wetlands and blueways, which I think that's certainly a well-needed effort. So, I would encourage this board to support, and it sounded like everybody is in favor, to support a resolution in favor of, to support making those changes. Just because a piece of property has a mud hole on it for a week doesn't mean it's, it's well-ends. So, to protect homeowner and property owner's rights, I think that's a well-warranted effort. Mr. Youngblood had some issues. He was the other of this evening, and with the, for a couple of meetings now, we've had issues come before us with sports activities or sports venues in the county with fields, availability of fields. The schools evidently, I've heard that a couple of times, the tennis courts in all three of the high schools, I believe, are in sad shape. And he alluded, he talking about the, the school bond and forty-million-dollar school bond that we did. So, I think, I'd like to see if we could refresh or on the projects that have been funded through that, just to kind of bring us back to speed where we're at and how we can help maybe put some of these, these facilities back together, the tennis courts especially. I understand the one at West Carter is actually a safety issue, if I'm not mistaken. So, whatever we can do to help them out, I know it's, we certainly appreciate them coming to Newport to play tennis, love having them. But they've also got facilities at the high schools they can use as well. Next, I'd like to congratulate and thank our Employees of the Month for the last quarter, actually, Jamie Hicks Employee of the Quarter, Mr. Howell, Mr. Montgomery, and Ms. Rose for their dedication and professionalism to the county and encourage them to keep it up. We really appreciate what they do. What else did I have? Appreciate it, Mr. Pastor Gene, Mr. Satiris, your presentation and the collaboration between Hope Mission and Sheriff Buck and what you do to, to help get some, a lot of these folks out of situations and obviously a savings to the taxpayers. So, we appreciate that effort and look forward to seeing a new facility as you break ground with that, and four million dollars ought to put you in a, a nice building and a nice new facility. And we're glad to, to support that and help you out in any way we can and continue that support. And then last, I'll just welcome aboard our new Assistant Manager, Mr. Ranol, Matt Ranol, and our new IT Director, Mr. David Montgomery. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you and hope to have a good relationship going forward. And again, welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Shin. Vice Chairman Mansfield?
I'm going to try to be brief. I'll just piggyback, reiterate most of the comments of everybody else. I would like to recognize an old friend here in the front row, Randy Martin, former town manager of Morehead City for many years, did an excellent job, former NC State baseball player, and I coached all three of his sons in basketball. He had, he, he gave out some good genes. Great, great young men have gone on to be productive citizens, and it's just, it's always good to remember all the kids you've coached and see good friends come back and get to see them when you hadn't seen them in a while. Randy right now is the current helping out town in a while, is their interim town manager. I'd also like to congratulate the Employees of the Quarter, the Jamie Hicks, Jane Rose, Big Country, Matt Howell, and Mr. David Montgomery for all the work they do in the library. And I'll let it go on to the next Commissioners, and I'm going to excuse myself for the restroom real quick. I apologize for having to, but we're not quite finished.
Mr. Chairman, I missed one thing, and I apologize. I would like to, I would like to add this one thing. Newport pig cooking is coming up. I can't believe I forgot that, but I wrote it down and missed it. But anyway, that's coming up, first weekend in April. It's always a miserable weekend for weather historically, but it's going to be great this year, so I hope everybody comes out and has a great time. It's a good weekend, Friday and Saturday entertainment, great barbecue, great festivities. So, thanks for letting me add that in.
It's a good thing you redeemed yourself. Mayor Barber would have lunched you on the town square.
Been on the phone with me this evening on the way home.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shin. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had you covered, Chuck, if, if you didn't mention the Forty-seventh Annual Newport Pig Cooking. Welcome to Matt, welcome to Ben. Glad to have you all aboard. It's a great institution to work for. When you, when we get the financial report, I, I just think about how much work that Dee Meachall does every year and the excellent marks we get from the audit. Just cannot understate just the thanks and gratitude that this board has for you.
Well, thank you. That's the whole finance department without the-
You and your team. Yeah. Well, every team's got a leader, every team's got a coach, and so, thank you very much for that. And you, you, you think about our taxes, our revaluation, and you ask yourself, what does county government do for me? And just in sitting in here tonight and looking at the financial report and seeing those pie graphs up there from education to parks and recreation to looking at our Employees of the Month, Matt Howell in law enforcement, David Montgomery as a library technician, Jane Rose going out and comforting our shut-ins and elderly that don't have an opportunity to get out on their own, our partnerships with Hope Mission and their jail diversion program and the soup kitchen and the services that they provide. County government does a lot for you. It does a lot more on a day-to-day basis than often the federal or state government does. And I'm so proud to be part of a, of a group, a group of dedicated individuals to provide those services to you, all the way to honoring a fallen veteran like Livingston Brooks with the Memorial Park, so that his courage and his dedication will never be forgotten. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Moore?
I too echo everything that the previous Commissioners has said tonight, and I do want to, to congratulate Matt Howell, Detective Matt Howell, David Montgomery, and Jane Rose for a job well done. Kind of wanted to just mention, I was noticing out on the roads, there've been several accidents. When you're out on the roads evenings and at dusk and even early mornings, be careful out there. Watch the, the children are still out with the school buses and all of the, the people that's out on the road. Just so many safety issues that we need to just be aware of and, and protect our neighbor to make sure everyone is safe. With that being said, welcome Matt and Ben and Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Walter?
Chairman, thank you. It's been a pleasure serving for the last two and a half months. I'm really enjoying working with our interim county manager, Sharon Griffin. Dee, this is very educational for me, so I appreciate you walking me through all the To my constituents, we're going to do the best we can with the revow and with the, with the discovery of what we need to do in the county in the coming three to five years. We've got some big projects that are coming up that require some funding, so this is not going to be easy for some of us newbies. And I think some of the veteran Commissioners on the board know what they're getting into, but I'm going in with eyes wide open, and I hope to be a good representative of everything we need to do and keeping a long view for the next five to ten years for this county. I am so happy for the family that was able to get the piece of property in Harker's Island recognized for their veteran, our veteran. I know it's been long in coming for that, for that family and the extended family, and now I feel I'm a part of it since I've gotten a chance to read the whole history. So, I look forward to passing that island and going and sitting on the picnic table. Thank you for all the employees that were recognized tonight, Detective, Library, and Elderly Services here in the county. Thank you all, three of you, for the work you do. And finally, I am trying to do my part down at Emerald Isle. I recognize that we've had some bridge work, bridge inspections going on, and I'm doing my part to reconnect with our Department of Transportation representatives here in the county to make sure that we improve the communication and advance notice. But driveinc.gov is a pretty important website, and I think you should know that there's probably going to be some bridge inspections going on Newport River Bridge, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth of March. So, if you keep an eye on that website, that would be very helpful to help alleviate some of the anxiety that is caused when we see traffic build up in our, in our county. But I'm going to do my, my part to make sure that we have notice of that. So, I appreciate being of service to everyone. I appreciate being on the boards that I'm on and learning more about all the major muscle moves here in the county. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Walter. I too would like to thank our county employees. We couldn't do all the things we do without our great employees, and certainly want to welcome our two new ones, Matt and Ben, joining the excellent team with Sharon and Dee and all the other folks, and we're glad to have you, and I know you've already hit the ground running. So, thank you all. Nothing further before the board, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Shin. All in favor? Thank you all for coming.